We'll go ahead and call the work session to order.
Sorry, we're going, thank you. Greg and I are getting on the same page. So the only item on your agenda tonight for the work session is where the company of our financial advisor, Mr. Greg Garry, is at. So he is going to talk about the sustainability analysis. And I know we've talked a little bit on the budget already, kind of big picture. So this is kind of your first introduction. So I know I've talked to you guys a little bit. You guys have a copy of the sustainability analysis. We normally kind of jump in, which is on your main agenda tonight, is how we get to your actual funds and what our recommendations are. And it's been a few years since Greg actually walked you guys through that. And I know we've had some people who've said, well, how do you get to that point? Well, that point where we started is the sustainability analysis. So I asked Greg to spend some time today to just kind of talk through the sustainability analysis, kind of what it does, how we do, and where we get our information to then make recommendations to the council about what to do for the actual budget. So this is going to be pretty high level, but Greg is the expert in this area. And this is our sound financial planning right here that is led by Greg and his team. So.
Thanks, Ryan, and good evening.
Hi.
And we're not waiting on Greg, right? No, Greg's coming, but he's running a little late. So, okay.
So.
I'm sorry, Greg. I forgot this is live stream.
Okay, I'm sorry. Usually nobody has a problem hearing me.
Just the people watching, all one of them.
So that's my good lead in. Thanks, Julie, for this. You know, we're sustainable as long as you drink, eat, and make interest income.
Yes, I do.
So, so right there, we've got a sustainable budget as long as she heads in that direction. So I'd like to kind of walk you through, I'm going to kind of walk through the major funds. And then I'm going to talk about the back part. Remember, the sustainability goes fund by fund through revenues and expenses. And then there's a second part, which I call it the landing pad that you're going to land on in 2028. Okay, because everything we do between now and 2028, which actually will be less than two years from now, you will be approving your own. As long as Senate Bill Two, SB Two, doesn't wipe out something in SB One, and I dubbed it SB Two. It's obviously not that yet. But when SB Two comes and rearranges SB One, we'll, we'll take it from there. But as we know it, it's kind of built into the back part of the sustainability. So what I want to do is really kind of go through some of the funds. And then I'll go back to some of the recommendations because they'll make a little more sense. Okay? Now, as you know, on, on page six, there's assumptions of revenue and expenses that we've made for 27, 28, and 29. One of the big assumptions is that when you enact your new tax rate, you'll be able to bring in at least what you're bringing in now from the county as a whole tax rate. And that's a safe assumption because I've already calculated it. Okay? And so I kind of know again, where, you know, either where we're going to take off in 27, 28, or where we're going to land in 2028, depending on how you look at it. But I call it a flight path, right? The flight path that we're on. And so we put this together for 27, 28. But let's go to page seven on the sustainability. Now, Ryan, I'm assuming that, and I'm going to do a little dialogue with you here every once in a while. So, so heads up. You have not talked about the excess levy to the council yet.
I've given them a heads up about the excess levy. They're generally aware of it.
Okay.
But I also want you to keep up to speed on it tonight.
Yeah. So we're, we've got a resolution that will be coming to a theater near you once Dan blesses it. And that will be appealing the maximum levy for the three-year growth factor that the state just gave us last week. Okay? And so Avon's going to qualify for it. So why I bring that up on page seven is when you look at 26's revenue and you look at 26's budget, you're going to say, oh, my gosh, we are unbalanced. We're not a balanced budget. Okay? Because 9.9 million is less than 10.2. Well, why is that? Because we put in extra police officers and some other expenses. And it looks like we may qualify for $850,000. And let me tell you two good reasons why you want to do it. One is you'll, you'll have that levy forever and ever a man. So Jason, that's even going to outlive you. Okay? And so that's a long time, right? And so once it's in place, then it will help provide those necessary services as we go forward. Reason number two is this piece of paper next year will not exist, period. These, the excess levy appeals like this will be off the table and are going, have been torpedoed by SB One. We may get, we may maintain our annexation appeals. And so so far, that looks like that's okay. So as we grow with annexation, you know, we will do an adequate fiscal plan and we will make sure, and we'll peel that. But for all practice, there, there is no other appeals that are going to be allowed. And so this is your last shot and something that we're recommending in order to afford or be able to implement the 10,200. Now, Ryan, do you want to specifically talk about what you put in there or not at this point?
I don't think at this point, I'm going to talk about it at the end of the council meeting.
Okay, okay. So that's how you notice that in 2025, we are, our projected revenues are higher than our projected budget of 9.1. And it's not really projected budget or our actual budget of 9.1. Now turn to page eight. Why is that? And, and where is this flight path going? Well, the real critical thing is to look at that line about four down. And I'm sorry if it's a little eye test for some of you. But there's so much, you know, we want to try and get the history on here too. But you can see that we had special distributions. Now you might say, well, what is that? Well, that's what I call the pennies from heaven or the extra LIT. And remember, I like to define that for the viewers at home. That's local income tax. Okay? That comes into the general fund. That will self-destruct probably pretty much once you implement your own tax. And it will not be anything like the, the amount that's in the past. And so that's why we have eliminated it going forward. And you know, here in Hendricks County, we actually, I think, enjoyed one of the higher lit growth rates of any community or any county in the state of Indiana, including Hamilton. So we've got that built into the certified shares that are coming in in the 26 budget. Now, there, there's no doubt about it, the one that we got to be really, really careful with is the line that's labeled interest income. Because if you haven't noticed, you should notice that that was about 150,000, 102,000. And so it could go to the rock bottom, you know, as rumor has it, the Fed chairman might not be there in May. Now, I think that's more than a rumor, but you know, so, so interest income will go down. And it may take it a little bit because, as you know, right now, if you travel up and down 36 or whatever, there's some banks that are still locking you into four and a half or nine months, 12 months. And how long are you, Julie, out? You're not doing CDs, right? You're doing, yeah. So you got to watch it because it may turn on you and go down faster than a CD will. And so I know you'll do an awesome job, awesome job at doing it. So, so keep in mind, that's really, really important. And so we've built it, or we've taken it down. Should we take it down to $100,000? I don't think so. I think we've got some strong balances that'll, that are better than where we were in 2021. So I think we'll have adequate revenue at that point in time. But that'll also be the time when you'll be enacting your new lit rate. Okay, so if you look at the rest of them, so I, I say you got three buckets, right, of revenue in the general fund? You've got the property taxes, you've got LIT, and you got everything else. That's called miscellaneous form two revenues. And Ryan and I are arm wrestle quite a bit here when I was here all day. And as about the level of residential, commercial and all that. And so we keep it, the residential fairly strong, but as you can see, commercial, you know, we're really not increasing it to the levels of the past. Again, you guys could all, guys and gals could always disagree with these numbers. But we are somewhat trying to be conservative, but not that conservative because we want to try and put together a realistic revenue. Okay? Because that helps you put together a realistic budget. But I did not build in the, the excess levy because first of all, we didn't have the data. And second of all, we, you know, it's a 50/50 chance at this point in time. I'm going to say the best. Even though it, it, it's out there, it, you know, there was probably only about 50% of them made it last year, if that. And you know, the, the, the State House is against it. So. Okay.
Greg, before you move to the next page, would you also point out to them what the breaker impact, your estimates?
Oh, absolutely.
I think, I know I've had some questions from them about, yeah, how are we going to be hurt over the next couple of years because of SB One? And that's where it shows up.
Yeah. So first of all, let's go to, you got to go back now. I'm going to make you go all the way back to page 74. And Ryan, thank you for that lead in because I had my yellow sticky on that page. So I timed you well. So on 74, you will see there's two things going on that the most dramatic thing, and I spoke to you before about this. It's the $300 credit down there at the bottom. That is, you're going to get 14% of it, and it means about $291,000 of potential lost revenue. So what do I mean by that? When Ryan and I and Julie put together the budget and we say, we need $4 million in the general fund, if you go back there, you're going to see we're going to lose about 200,000 more of that, and that's going to continue to grow. Okay? So keep in mind, I was up in northern Indiana and I could almost kick a few people just from the standpoint that they're out there. The state gave us a 4% growth quotient. And everybody's like, okay, we can raise our budget 4%. I'm like, whoa, 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 whoa. Did you not hear that there's going to be a new credit and Circuit Breaker is going to increase? And did you not hear Ways and Means said, we're on our way to a $3 tax rate as fast as we can get there? Okay, so Circuit Breaker will start eliminating, being eliminated or kept. And so there's a special deduction of 10% or $300 tax credit to homesteads in 2026. We've used the 300. We've seen 199 and some, we've used as low as 200. But here we were just being conservative on the number and using 300. Why would we use 200? Because there are some bills, it's the lesser of 10% or $300. So obviously you have to have a bigger bill to get the $300. So that means then that we're expecting over 291,000 additional loss. And that loss will keep going as we go. Okay? And you notice that we even put in there the TIF, it will impact the TIF sum. So that's important, and that's being factored in on page eight. So I'll pause there just a moment and say, any questions? So Circuit Breaker is now not only Circuit Breaker, but it's lost revenue, right? And so, you know, Representative Thompson and I had lunch and, and I said, oh, my gosh, this is going to end up in more Circuit Breaker. He said, no, it's not Circuit Breaker. It's, I said, okay, what do you want me to call it? It's lost revenue. Okay. It's the same thing, right? Yeah, as far as the bottom line on property taxes, it's going to be less. Okay? So if we advertise 5 million, it's going to be less than 5 million. Remember, we put together a budget based upon a number, and we assume that now with our, our 4B. But you know, this is the best estimates at this time. Okay? Did that help you, Ryan?
Yeah, if you guys see it on page eight, so it's like the fourth line down, Circuit Breaker impact. So if you look at the 2025 budget, it's 613,000. In 2026, it goes up to 920. And 27, it goes to 1,508,000. And 2028, it goes to 27,000. You can see that.
Yeah.
So that's, again, I know we talked about that. That's where, that's where we're seeing the rub. We can talk about it if you got that.
So we included all the other miscellaneous revenue on eight and nine. So now is when Ryan gets to later on and you get to your maximum budget amounts that we have set, that will tie into, and I put it on a big sheet of paper. It's 10.2 million for the general fund is what we're recommending. And that, that is now built into page 10 through page 16. Okay? So you can see all those details in when the police department gets up and, and makes their presentation. I think we've built all that in based upon the information Ryan has given us. Okay, let's go to the park fund. The park fund, I don't see, what's her, pardon me?
Yeah, Shelby's on here.
So the park fund is a challenging fund. There's no doubt about it. I'm on page 17. Okay? This is the new fund for 2023. And Ryan and I have challenged her all along the way that we need to bring in about $1 million of revenue. Okay? And actual for 2024 on page 18 was 813,000. And I think, Ryan, when you and I sat down and looked at 630, keep in mind, this is a 18-month budget. And you know that because I've given you that presentation before. We got to look at what's going to happen the second half of this year. We got to add in what's going, our projection is for 26, 12 and 6 equals 18. I can even do that without my calculator. And so that's the 18-month budget concept. And I think we were pretty on track for those revenues. And so right now, we kept the 2026 budget in check at 1,050,000. And I think that did tie into your recommended total there, Ryan. And so, you know, the park fund, if you look at page 18, it is not consuming property taxes. And it's not in, in consuming income taxes. Okay? That's an important point because the theater could change. And if you want to keep this level of park commitment, you may at some point in time have to introduce other revenues. I have not at this point in time because I said, well, we're going to have to be kind of careful on how we grow this budget. Okay? So any questions on that? And again, stop me at any point in time. Otherwise I'll continue on. No, right now, no, it's program income on page 18. That's it. Now, parks is also supported out of food and beverage, correct, Ryan, when we get there? Yeah, so. Yeah, only sports program income at this point in time. What I said was the, if we would keep a million-dollar commitment on the spend and revenue doesn't come in or dives down the, because of whatever reason. And you want to, so in the future, it may consume other revenues. Okay?
Yeah, it will be, you can have the July ones, show what your revenue and expenses were as of July 30.
Okay, next one is nine.
... to about 1, 2 in revenue if they continue at a pace they're going. So they should, this year, if they maintain that pace, exceed their budget on track for 1.2. On track for 1.2, that was their last number that I saw.
Now, Ryan, am I under a time deadline? Is, is the police chief going after me or what?
It's all you.
Okay. Okay. So the next one is page 19, which is.
Sean says he wants to talk.
No, I said that was your chance.
Page 19 is the unrestricted MVH fund. What do we mean by unrestricted? It means that you can use it for salt, sand, moving snow, doing all that kind of stuff. And, and you can use it for paving too. And as you can see on page 20, it really, it consumes about 1.2 million of property taxes. That's important because if that grows, you know, it takes away from the general fund. And then, you know, the most important thing, I think you're, I, I think you're considering the new wheel tax for the, for local. I could, I highly recommend you do that. And we have the numbers in the sustainability. And you know, if you want to go to the bonus round on community crossings, you've got to have wheel tax. So I hate to say it. I know people don't like a new tax, but it's a minimal amount on anything, and it's got to be plowed into the roads. And it really is going to make a great match for community crossings in the future. And it's going to be tougher to match for a lot of people. And it's going to be competitive, by the way. Okay, so on page 20, you've got the revenues and you see Circuit Breaker coming in there. And so, you know, and you, on this fund, you've got major moves kind of coming in and out. So, and those, that's the grants, right? So basically it's property taxes and the gas tax that we get. Okay? The, what I'm hearing around the state of Indiana is gas tax not going up, not going down, about staying the same. And that's what we've seen in the 630. So, you know, we'll see what happens in the future with that. But I do know that the city of Indiana has a lot of work to do and needs the money. So I don't think the local share will change quite yet. Okay? Next one is page 22, which is the restricted fund. Okay? Remember what we have to do, and if you go to page 23, we have to, when the state said, we're going to give you 50% more road money from the gas tax, and we're going to make you put 50% in a restricted fund. Now, for budgeting purposes on the, on gateway, we put them together because you got, there's only one fund. And so, you know, you can only use this for basically paving streets, right? Can't use it for salt and sand, which is unfortunate because in northern Indiana, or actually in southern Indiana, last year, we had more snow and they, they ran their funds down really, really low. It may change, the split may change to 60, 40. I haven't heard that being set in stone, meaning that we would put 60% in unrestricted and 40 here. The answer is Ryan does a really good job of managing the two as a total. Okay? And so that's the key, but we're required to put 50% and it's very restrictive. Local roads and streets, page 24. To me, it's one of the most outdated funds there is. If I was a legislator for the day, I'd say, let's put roads and streets in, in MVH and let's, let's quit fooling around with a couple of funds. And, you know, because local roads and streets can only be used for local roads and streets. It can't be used for anything else. And if you look back at 25, it comes from gas tax. So it's kind of like we're dividing up the gas tax for no other reason, you know? But that's the rules of the ballgame. And you see, we've got it for street construction. And again, this fund, we pretty, we will budget a little bit extra if we can in 2026. That's what we're posing, proposing because we have a pretty adequate balance. And again, when you talk about the flight path, okay, to 2028, local roads and streets is a factor. Okay? So. Next one is the TIF fund. This is the big TIF fund. And so this is one where I've made the recommendation, and Ryan, I think you've got it. The deappropriation or what we call the line two resolution that you'll have later on, correct? For the TIF. And what we're doing is, if you go to page 27, what we're trying to do is, actually 27 is the projected revenue and 28 is the expenses. We've got the lease rental in for on top of the hill. I call it on top of the hill. It's kind of interesting. We've got the, we've got so much construction within half a mile of each other with the new highway garage. And with your new facility, I mean, it's rather awesome. And by the way, it's the best thing we ever did because the costs are going nothing but up. And if, you know, so we, we got it, we got in and out of the bond market very efficiently and very effectively. And so those, so what we're doing is we're actually with TIF, we're, we had a really aggressive budget in 2025 because we thought we would do some of these projects in 25. They're going to move to 26. So we lower the appropriation in 25 to build the appropriation. So we lower the appropriation in twenty-five to build the appropriation a little higher in twenty-six. So you could do the same thing with encumbrance, but we don't like that many encumbrances and/or additional appropriations. And so this is a better way to do it. Okay. Next one is CCI. Yes? I've got, I've got it in my notes. Okay, eight? Okay, eight's easy. Okay. I'm thinking we won't break the bank, but let me review that. Page twenty-nine is the CCI fund. I mean, you know, again, if I, I'd get rid of this fund if I ever could, but it's basically cigarette tax, vape tax, you know? And it's basically, it takes a long time at thirty thousand a year. And basically, we put it in as other capital outlay, can be used for road, streets, buildings, you know, extra stuff once we get into the building or something like that. CCD. CCD is an awesome fund, but here again, it's limited to one nickel, one nickel of your tax rate. That nickel has been the same nickel since probably, I don't know, Dan, what, nineteen twenties? Maybe thirties? It's been a long time. And so. Not that I'm alleging you were there in the twenties. For the record, it would have been your dad. So, but that nickel is the same nickel. So what we do is, we make sure that we advertise it high enough. So we bring in our nickel. And if you, if you look, the nickel brings in, on page thirty-two, the general property tax revenue of about 1.1 million. And obviously, we've got about $200,000 that the state takes away from us in circuit breaker and lost revenue. And so it gets down to around $962,000. And this, this fund accumulates, so that's really good. State doesn't take the money away from you. And it's used for improvements of, you know, can be used for building improvements or park improve, it can be used for anything, pretty much. Okay. And I see police vehicle purchases it's used for. So.
Greg, you mentioned that we are increasing that budget this year, do you remember that?
Yes, sir. No, well, it is, it is advertised at, are going to be advertised at 1.5. And so, yeah, go ahead. It's, go ahead and talk about it.
Yeah, you guys haven't seen the non-fund yet, budget, but you'll see this next month. And so I think I've shared with a couple of you, I've definitely shared it with the RDC, that because of the declining fund balance in the TIF district, I have some concern about our ability to pay for the Dan Jones widening projects. So we actually, this year, we're going to help support the TIF district. So instead of doing 900,000, which is what we normally budget, we're going to do 1.5 million. But 600,000 of that is going to go towards the Dan Jones widening project, which then in turn requires less TIF funding for us to help kind of start getting that TIF fund balance built back up. So it's a one-time thing. We've been building our fund balance up, but then next year, we're, our intent would be to go back down to the 900,000 again. But we're trying to supplement. Same thing with the wheel tax. I know a couple of you asked about the wheel tax, and that's what, we're going to use 200,000 in wheel tax to also help support. And then we're going to use 200,000 of edit. So that's a million dollars that we won't use from the TIF to be able to do the Dan Jones widening project. So using some cash to help support those.
Yeah, and so we kind of planned that out and looked at it. And remember, we've got TIF now supporting, you know, the new bond payments. And I'll show you, remember, part of the major TIF will be dropping off, you know, in two or three years. It's in here. Greg, we're on page thirty-three of the sustainability, if you want to play catch-up. Thirty-three is just sixteen bonds. I'm going to go through these fairly quickly. Thirty-five is the twenty-four bonds. And let's go to page thirty-seven, which is the food and beverage. And so this is one, Ryan, where I think we also kind of went up a little bit, didn't we? Let's see. Yeah, we went to the 2.4 million dollar level there. We had, if you look at page thirty-eight, we have been on track, again, thanks to Julie, gaining more revenue as we go. And so, and maybe a couple of other Julies. And so we have those expenses as we've put forth. And the other capital outlay is the big 339,000 one. And then we have our food and beverage bonds in there at 372. Again, that fit real, real comfortably within the 2.1 million. So if the rating agency comes back knocking on the door and saying, you know, do you have adequate coverage on your food and beverage bonds? Yes, we do. So now, the point is, you're supposed to always give the bond payment first access to revenue, okay? And so then you can also see what is supported by the parks fund and has been supported, like part-time groundskeeper and some of those. So Ryan, anything you want to kind of jump in on that? Okay. Tree mitigation, I won't spend a lot of time on that. And the riverboat fund, small, we got a little balance. I'm on page forty-two. You know, did you ever get your check yet? I don't. On, okay. It comes in once a year, usually the back half, which I'm not quite sure why, you know, who's holding the money for that long time? Because you would think that most of the, although we don't have riverboats anymore, most of the, you know, revenue sharing that's coming in from the casinos, you know, they've gotten them so far. I understand, you know, working with Shelby County and those, they seem to be holding up real well. I don't know about Terre Haute, but that one, you know, this won't change much at all. It was just, the lucky thing is, it'll keep going. That's where we're going to be lucky, hopefully, and there are no guarantees, okay?
Hey, Greg?
Yes?
Is riverboat solely casinos?
As opposed to?
So like I heard a statistic the other day that in Indiana, sports betting, people in Indiana spent between like five and six billion dollars in sports betting. Does sports betting get caught in this? Or is there a tax that the state's capturing somewhere from that?
You know, awesome question. I don't know that answer, Dan or anybody. That's real good. I'm, I'm thinking, given that it's never changed, no. So I don't think it has included it.
Right. I was wondering if the, I was more so wondering if the state's grabbing that, whereas they shared the casino with us, but they're not sharing sports betting revenue with us.
The issue's going to be if downtown Indianapolis gets one, then everybody else on other ends will probably suffer. And I guarantee probably Indianapolis won't share.
That was going to be my question. Is this just solely riverboat? I mean, what about Terre Haute now? What about up here in Gary?
Yeah, we don't have, we don't have riverboats anymore, Greg. So it's casino that, in the old term.
Okay, but still, you've got two brand-new casinos and our revenue is flat.
Right. Well, yeah, it's a revenue sharing that will not change and may go away. That's my understanding.
But we're only going to share a certain amount, no matter what the total income is.
Yeah, goes to the general fund. Yeah, right.
So our sharing is just 122,980.
Yeah, that's it.
How can we get more?
Go to your state legislators. But they're probably, you know, they're using it for their general fund.
Probably how they're funding schools.
Probably?
Probably how they're funding schools.
Yeah, probably. Well, yeah, because every dollar in the general fund also major part of it, most of the schools.
Right.
So. Okay, page forty-four. Page forty-four is the public safety fund. So Greg, what I talked about is, I'm going to go through, we went through the increased circuit breaker and the revenue loss just briefly in the back. And you heard me say that, you know, the key is, where do we land this time, two years from now with our new lit? And so this fund, at this point in time, will be torpedoed, okay? We have assumed it goes forward only from the standpoint that if you do a new lit of 1.2%, hopefully, you'll be able to get the right to manage where you put it, okay? Notice I said, hopefully, you will get the right. And because, again, SB two's coming to a theater near you next year. And so stay tuned. So we have assumed that this fund will continue, but Ryan and I were also fairly cautious with the grant, with the total cash balance not being very large, not to really increase it. Because the way I look at it, again, whatever you put in the twenty-six budget gets maintained in the twenty-seven budget, which sets the boundaries for the twenty-eight budget, unless you're going to cut and cut significantly. So again, it's kind of the flight path of where you're going to take off in 2028. So if you put too much in here, unlike the general fund, where we'll get some excess levy, hopefully, or we'll have to cut the 10.2. You know, in this one, that's the way we wanted to kind of keep it at this point. And hopefully, that, you know, there is no talk at all on 1128 that it'll be refunded back to the taxpayer, but they'll probably restrict it and have you spend it, you know, out and then close the fund. So same way with page forty-six. Edit is going away, okay? There's no doubt about it at this point in time. And I don't think we're going, unless, you know, someone just says, we're going back to the old way. You know, this is going to go away. Here, we kept the same level again because if we build too much in there, then we've got to support it with the new lit rate, okay? And so we kept it at the 1.5, and I think that's what your sheet shows also, doesn't it, Ryan?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. And you can see that what we spend it on is on page forty-seven. And so, you know, those contributions, HSA contribution is in there. And then there's other expenses that you're familiar with. Okay, next fund then we're going to go to is the infrastructure, or that's, that's the RIF fund, right? That's what we call the RIF fund. And so, you know, we've, we've sat down, looked at the amount we've got there. Obviously, if we don't have it, we don't spend that budget. But right now, we've got a pretty good cash balance in there. And Ryan, we've got it on Dan Jones widening. So we've got all hands on deck for that one because that's such an aggressive project. Okay? Anything else you want to say about that, Ryan? Okay. Next one, law enforcement continuing ad. We didn't cut, we didn't cut it, we just kept the same number. But obviously, those revenues, I don't have a lot of faith that they're going to grow much at all and maybe decrease over a period of time. Remember, that comes from handgun permits and all that kind of stuff. Rainy day, page fifty-three. Okay, we do have a nice, I believe, we finally hit above 1.2 million, 1280 on page fifty-three. In the recommendations, we say, we'd like to get to 2 million, but we don't want to do, I don't believe, any transfer at this point in time, Ryan, this year.
We've done a transfer.
You already did it?
We didn't do it before the end of June.
Okay.
But we've moved it now, so.
It's done, it was two fifty.
So how much was moved?
Two fifty.
Two fifty, okay. So good. If we get to a nice 1.5, that's pretty comfortable. And, and remember, this is one that we, again, you know, I've done this down in southern Indiana. We budget it for when a tornado takes the roof off of the building. And there's been tornadoes taking roofs off of town halls and things like that. So they've had to use sometimes this. So that, or there was a major snow that someone had to, you know, they got 10 inches down in southern Indiana and had to use some of their rainy day fund for. So, you know, there are emergencies that come up. Fifty-five's just that reserve fund for the bonds. The next one is fifty-seven, the most critical. And this is the summary of the recreation impact fee. Awesome, awesome that we have it. And on page fifty-eight, it is helping to supply park improvements.
Greg, you have a half hour.
Perfect. And then the king comes out, right? Got it. Next one is page fifty-nine, Reagan Logistics. These, really, the Avon landings and all of those, these are just our individual TIF fund. Keep in mind, we used to have our nice little one TIF fund, and the state board of council said, for every TIF district, you ought to have a separate fund. And so Julie did lose probably a little hair over that. And so, but that's the way it is, okay? And so those are the different TIF funds. So let's, stormwater, stormwater, we, on page sixty-nine, we are increasing that one slightly. And do you have 1,350 with me? Yep, 1,325, just a little 25 different. I do have 1,325. And so the revenue's holding up. We did do a check again as up six thirty. And so I suspect that revenue will go up over a period of time. ARP, we're going to be done with it at the end of 2025. And what, what a great way to fund our most, one of our signature assets that will have for many, many years going forward, the new town center, right? Did I say that right? Okay, good. Huh?
Civic Center.
Civic Center, sorry. Yeah, okay. Okay, back to seventy-four. Now we've gone, we're going to go into some of the, what I call the non-fund detail, but some of the important stuff. So seventy-four, I've already talked to you about. And Greg, just to highlight, the, the, we're having increase in the circuit breaker due to as the tax rate increases. And we're going to have this loss as a result of the new credit that the state gave to people in 2026. So that will be lost revenue, and we're expecting almost $300,000. Remember, the state said, we're going to give you a 4% growth quotient, but we're going to take maybe half or all of it away from you. In a lot of places, I'm actually losing all of it. And so the growth quotient is netting zero. So if you depend on four and budget for four and you lose it all, you're going to basically use your cash balance. And unfortunately, there are a lot of communities out there that aren't really aware about that. And so, you know, it's important. Okay. The, the, right now, on page seventy-five, that shows you where the circuit breaker benefit or cutoff is. And we use that on page seventy-five and seventy-six for the different taxing districts. And seventy-seven shows our history of our tax rate. Now, this is important maybe because, guess what? None of these numbers in the past will matter in the future because the AV for residential homes over the next five years will be going down, 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 possibly, maybe, unless the market value brings it up, up, up. And at best, it may net out, okay? Because the standard deductions and all that, and I think I handed that graph out to you before, you know, on average, net AV will go down 66 to 8%, but it may grow, okay? Your gross assessed value may still go up of the value of a home, but stay tuned, that might turn around, too. Keep in mind, we, here in Indiana, our gross values of homes have been catching up with the rest of the U. the rest of the US very slowly and over a period of a long time, you know, and so we kind of did a disservice of not raising our gross values in the past, maybe a little more aggressive because it was, they were being sold for a higher number. But that's the way it is. So, you know, we will, the 40 cent tax rate, we, we, I, I'm just saying right now 34, 37, 37, but it could go up quite a bit more and not only will net AV, but if you go to page 78, we're going to lose probably a lot of the 148 million personal property that is over here in the corner. Okay, because just had this discussion with Hancock County Council today and, you know, the minimum assessed value, the cutoff right now is 80,000. So for like my business, I haven't, that 80,000 has been around for a while. We're not filing tax returns anymore, 103s. Matter of fact, I talked to a CPA and he said, I think I'm, next year I'll probably have one or two, because the cutoff is going to be 2 million. And by the way, it's 2 million in each county. So if you have a taxpayer that has, files a consolidated 103, Form 103 is the part personal property tax. We just got this breaking news yesterday, the other day when we talked to DLGF, that it'll be 2 million per county. And that will also affect utility distributed property, which is UD 45, which is also built into the 148, 148 million. So that will, UD 45, which is the, basically the form that the utilities are submitting, if they're under the IURC, that may, that may, the floor won't be eliminated, but they'll still have access to the 2 million is our understanding. But keep in mind also, the minimum floor that I told you would go away at some point in time of 30% for personal property on the Form 103, probably line 15, it's gone effective next year and we, you know, the state of Indiana is having a hard time redoing those forms. Now, one of the things, Ryan, the where, when there's personal property in a TIF district, the floor is not eliminated. DLGF is trying to figure out how they're going to have Form A and Form B and maybe Form C and D and E. And so this is going to be really interesting when taxpayers figure out that they've got one set of true tax value factors on Form 103, if you're in a TIF, but if you're not in a TIF, it's another one. So they said they're working real hard on the new Form 103s, but it'll be several months, probably Christmas before they come out.
Can I point out a couple of things to you guys that I think, I think are important on these that Greg just was talking about? The first one, it's my page 76, I apologize, I'm, I'm working off the old one because I had notes on mine. It's the actual and projected property tax rates. Do you guys see that sheet? Somebody, I was gonna say, I think you guys are one, one page behind me. But a couple of these things are important and some of these things are, are good for you guys to see, but want to talk about trends on this one. So if you look at the total rate, if you look back at 2013, we had a 40 cent tax rate. We basically, we had a couple of years where it came down and then our tax rate went up, where it peaked in 2018 at 41.4193. And then you will notice that we had a steady, we've had a steady drop and our tax rate is actually less now than it was in 2013. Seven out of 11 years, our tax rate actually went down and two out of the last seven, or five out of the last seven, it's gone down as well. So when, I know there's this sentiment out there that local government is what's causing property taxes to go up and maybe that's true, but it's not the town of Avon. We can show our tax rate has progressively been going down. Now that also makes a great point then if you turn to your next page, which is the actual certified assessed values and I'll do the same thing. So if you look at the top, the top column is net AV. Every year since 2013, our assessed value has increased. But I also want to point out to you guys that since 2020, our assessed value has gone up a billion dollars. So again, when, I, I think these are important things for you guys to note. It, I think that is really important information, both of those two spreadsheets that they show that.
And Ryan, to add on that, if you look at the percentage growth, I consider that smart, remember you, I've used the term smart economic growth. We've had good growth. I don't think we've, we have not had a Westfield growth where it's been uncontrollable and it's my understanding they, they're even going to have to give 0% increases now because they went too far, too fast. And so this has been a good managing. Obviously it puts pressure on public safety, obviously it puts pressure on parks, obviously it puts things, but I think we've been managing it in a really good way and it says kudos to your management team and your council, you know, because this has worked out really, really well and we've issued some bonds strategically not overburdening the tax rate and, and everything. So thanks for pointing that out, Ryan.
Right.
I think that's.
And so the, maybe the one other thing I want to point out on that sheet and I, I guess, I want to give you guys credit to that because I know when I was hired, the goal of the council was to increase not necessarily residential, but industrial growth and this is where you're seeing it. This is the proof that that policy and that push that you guys as a town council made that we want to try to grow economic development. You can see that in the numbers, it's really happening. The one other thing then I want to point out to you guys is the projected. And so if you look at the projected, it's a little bit more of a grim prospect. Now again, I've seen.
I think it's going to go up even more.
Yeah, I mean, you'll see that in here, we've projected some, actually some decreases in assessed value. Some of that is based on what's happening with the state and SB1 in the way that they're taking away assessed value. We think this is a very conservative approach. We actually, again, seeing, I've shared with you guys a couple in my weekly updates, what we're seeing in assessed value growth and construction value this year. I don't think we're going to see numbers like that. We're being very conservative in that, but that's the danger in SB1 is that as those assessed values start to go down, that your tax rate is going to go up. So this, this was the purposeful intent of the legislature when they did this is they're driving your AV down, they're going to drive your tax rates up and they're going to make you guys be the bad guys, making you look like you actually are increasing taxes when you're not really at all. You're just trying to maintain what you're actually doing. So here is where you can actually see in the numbers, what the legislature is actually potentially doing to us now. See how it actually pans out.
Yeah, and you and I've talked about this when you came to our office. I think that the drums are beating heavy, that the growth quotient on property taxes is going to be a big fat zero going forward. So the growth quotient, remember I told you, you, the, the max levy, that's, that's going to be gone, the growth quotient on property taxes may be zero going forward. So it's all going to be shoved on lit that you annually have to approve and so it's going to, it's going to get tougher. Okay, so again, that's why we're being careful. Page 90 is, I'll keep going, moving so that we're, stay on time. 90 is important because that's where our TIF district, I told you, we've got our big one moving off in March 1 of 2028. So shifting over and trying to keep a balance in our tip as we go forward, it is going to get, that gravy train is going to kind of stall out a little bit. Okay, so we got to be kind of careful with that and manage it carefully because of the 4.2, 1.3 or 1.4, I mean, it's pretty coming theater near you really quick. Okay.
Where do we make that up then?
Either creating a new TIF district or you don't. That's it.
So the 1.4, is that the revenue we're, we're, we're collecting now? Where we're getting 100% of it or will we end up getting 40% of that number?
Well, for 2026, you'll get.
I'm just talking when it goes away in 28.
Oh, when it goes away, you won't get any, you won't have that TIF coming in, period. 1.4.
Well, we should get something out of it.
Well, what, the AV will roll into your tax rate.
Right, so of that tax rate, what do we get, 30%, 40%?
No, you'll get a, a lower tax rate if the, if the growth quotient is zero, you're going to get nothing out of it. Right? So because in, when you apply your tax rate to that and you can't grow anymore, your maximum levy, it just plows the tax rate down.
So I look at it, it goes, it's in the pie and right now we're 100% of the pie, right?
Yep.
And when this expires, it's still in the pie, but now instead of getting 100%, so much goes to the township, so much goes to the school, so much goes to the county, so much goes to us. So instead of getting 100, we should still get 20, 30, 10, something.
But it's the AV, the AV, it's not the dollars, don't think it about the dollars. The AV will come into your total AV, okay? And if you cannot raise your tax, your maximum levy and the maximum levy is frozen, then it will drive down the tax rate.
Something doesn't make sense because 1.4 million is not going to go away.
No, it's not going to go away, Greg. So I think it's your page 84, you'll see this, which I think this is what's maybe confusing you, Greg. So this is of a normal tax rate, this is what we are. So in theory, Greg, you're thinking we ought to get that 12.52%. Like right now, we're getting 100 of it because it's in a TIF.
Right.
And so in theory, we'd get 12.52%. But the reality is what Greg's saying is because we're not able to capture that, because they're not going to allow us to grow, we're not going to even get the 12.52%. We're going to get the zero because they're not going to allow a growth factor to allow you to increase. So if they create zero growth factor, it becomes, that 12.52% becomes zero. You're, you're right in theory, Greg, but that's not the way the legislature actually does it.
Right, so if we got a growth quotient in the future, then we would get some of that and it would help. But the, the concept at this point in time, the growth's going to be zero. Great deal, huh?
Why are we, I was gonna say, are we anticipating something in TIF 6 here?
TIF 6 is our, our TIF for the Hill, right?
Oh yeah, TIF area 6 is Eastern Gray.
So we're gonna, we have additional revenue coming in there.
You will, but remember that will go towards developer purchase bonds. So we may get some revenue, but we may not. Or as we start paying off those developer purchase bonds, then yes, we would start getting some of that TIF revenue.
But would I like to create a new TIF?
Sure. And that's what, we, we will probably ask, so that piece of TIF that will go off in 28, we will probably recreate that TIF because, I think we're going to have to because our TIFs have to be connected. In the Eastern Gray TIF will become disconnected from the rest of the TIF. But when we redo the TIF, we're going to set a new base. So it's not going to generate that money. But again, as you guys start to see the comp plan and you see some of the other things we're talking about, you know, we talked about the Gateway District previously, like some of those things would maybe be in it. So as some of those things happen, we could eventually maybe see some additional revenue from those. But again, that, that could be 10, 15 years down the line before we start seeing some of that.
We need to create a new TIF district pretty soon or identify.
Well, and, and you'll remember, Greg, we talked about that. This was, we knew that this first section of TIF was going to roll off in 28 and that's part of why we pushed so hard for the Reagan, the Ronald Reagan North, the Ronald Reagan South and the Avon Logistics. And so we've really, from a financial standpoint, we've planned that as this one rolls off, those should be starting to generate revenue in those TIFs to replace that money and as we start paying off those developer purchase bonds, you're going to see, we're going to start paying for projects from those TIF districts instead of from the Avon Economic Development Area because the Avon Economic Development Area is going to not be generating as much revenue.
So we're on top of it and we're trying to map it out, but we also, if you had a nice big, another new area, we'd, we'd probably bring it in and we'd probably tell a developer, it's our money, not yours.
The other thing I want to point out to you guys really quick, because I think it's, we've talked sometimes about, you know, how do other towns have so much money and why do we have so little? It's my page 84, so it's probably your page 85 and it's total property tax rate comparison to some, similar units of government. If you guys get to that one, you'll notice, I, I think this is like my favorite spreadsheet in the entire sustainability analysis. So when we talk about this, one, because you can look at other people's tax rates compared, the schools' tax rate compared to other entities, corporate is the town. So if you look at the town, the town of Avon's tax rate is the 33 cents. Well, the town of Plainfield's tax rate is 81, town of Danville's is 57 cents, town of Brownsburg is 92 cents and Pittsburgh is 50 cents. So our tax rate is the lowest tax rate of all the corporate. Now again, Greg and, and Charlie have tried to be fair and to say, well, some of those other towns include other things, they may have a fire department or whatever. And so we try to compare those, you know, without the schools. So Greg then tried to show it without schools. But when we talk about why, why don't, why do these other towns have so much money? It's because their tax rates are so much higher. I mean, that's what, Brownsburg's tax rate is three times higher than ours.
And it's because you're so young.
Yeah, it's because we're young and it's because if you guys recall, I've told you guys this story before, when they allowed all the entities to increase their tax rates, the town of Avon chose to give a credit to taxpayers and said, we're going to keep our tax rate low, we're not going to triple it even though we can. And now whether that was a good decision or not, it's just, it is what it is and that's where we're at. But when we talk about that, how are other entities generating so much revenue, their tax rates are substantially higher than ours.
Page 129 to stay on course.
Thanks, Greg.
You're welcome. This is where we land, we think, two years from now, less than two years from now, because you will start probably enacting your new lit rate, maybe April, May in 2027. Okay, last time I looked, we're already in August, we'll be in September of 25, so less than two years. What this shows is on the far right-hand side is that we're bringing in about 5.1 million of lit between what's consumed in the general fund, what's consumed in the edit fund and the PSC, PS lit. So when we do an estimation, it is an estimation because we don't have, Indiana Department of Revenue hasn't even began to virtually fence Avon. But the estimate is that we have about 923 million of income. If you even said that was, let's see, half that or twice that. If you look in the middle, we're seeing at this point in time, we would have to enact at a bare minimum 0.38 lit. So we do have room, which on the right, left-hand side, sorry, I'm dyslexic, on the left-hand side, the 1.2 million or the 1.2%, sorry, would bring in around 11 million. Okay, so the, what, what do I call that breathing room? Okay, where we will, at some point, and we, we talked about this already when I give you SB1, version one and, and there was a lot of, well, why wouldn't you go, everybody said, why wouldn't you go to the max? Well, keep in mind, SB2 may change that 1.2 and because there are some cities, we did an analysis in Bloomington, Dan and Bloomington and Monroe, Bloomington loses a lot, Monroe really gains. So that 1.2 for a city and town versus the county 1.2, I suspect that could change in SB2. I'm worried it might. But here, we have the, if we start having zero growth and the tax rate going up and no benefit from the 1.4 million coming out of the TIF, then here's where we'll have to make it up in the lit rate. And so this says for both the rating agency and for you, the management, that we've got some room, but everything we put into the 2013 that we've got some room, but everything we put into the 26 number only tightens it up for 27, 28. Okay? And so that's where I want to kind of caution you. And then what we did on page 134 and 135, and Greg, we talked about the wheel tax. 134, we've got the surtax and the wheel tax on, at the minimum level, and estimated high and low. And then we have it at the maximum level, high and low. This is, this is a no-brainer. I mean, you need to do it. It's important, it's going to be used for roads, it's going to be used for road match on, on community crossing. And if you want to get the bonus bucks from community crossing, you've got to have a wheel tax. It's my understanding, at this point in time. So, you know, that's going to be something that everybody is considering, whether you're city, town, county. And remember, you've got to be over a certain size. So some people can't, AMO can't do it. So. So that kind of sums it up, Ryan. I, I don't know if I made it with, to my half an hour, but are there other areas you wanted me to touch on?
Are there bonds out there that we could retire early?
We, we constantly look at that, refund, there's not. Retire, at this point in time, are, they're fairly new. So I, I don't believe we want to do that, because we do want to hold on to our cash, because that'll be king as we go forward.
What about HRH?
HRH will be paid off, I believe, next year. And then we'll be using that revenue, hopefully for future projects, as delineated in the capital, five-year capital improvement plan. That, Ryan, I've been working really hard on. So we've, we've got that course kind of set, too.
You guys have any questions? I think Greg covered everything I wanted to, but we've got a little bit of time. If you guys have some questions, or if you're, need to go for a walk and get some fresh air before the council meeting, that's what, too.
I think it'll be interesting to see what changes out of the SB 1 in the short session coming up.
I am assured that there will be a change. And, but again, I think there will be some corrections.
Okay.
Yeah. You know, and so, you know, I think that's a given, because I think there are some, some errors in, in some things that need clarified. The question is, does it go beyond that? That's why I keep telling everybody, stay tuned for SB 2. This is going to be a saga, I suspect.
A trilogy?
Yeah. You think you saw Batman's a lot, I think we're going to see a lot of these.
We appreciate you coming and walking us through.
Thank you. Ryan's going to have me stay for the seven, for briefly.
Okay, we can talk about it really quick.
Okay. What do you want to talk about? This? Oh, gotcha, perfect, yeah.
What about financing mechanisms in the future, like BOTs? You're not a fan?
No, 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 that's wrong. Okay, BOT is an awesome way to deliver a project, doing it in, in several places. It's not a way to finance. Okay, and matter of fact, I think that's kind of even dried up. Okay, now maybe you are doing, have you done any over the last six months? Okay, so they are supposed to be done by a registered municipal advisor, if they're with a, a municipality. So it is not necessarily the best way to, we do not believe it's the best way to finance, period. Because the tax-exempt traditional bond can always usually win out over a, over a non-traditional method. So I, I believe those are possible still in the future, and something you may or may not want to look at as you go forward.
But, well, I don't know why you wouldn't want to look at it, it's another option.
Right, but at this point in time, we're not building anything, per se, other than the road. And, and I believe, we're not issuing debt on that.
Well, we may build a new police station.
At that point in time, we would, if you want to look at it, yes.
Well, that's what I'm thinking of.
Yeah. So, sure. As, as a registered municipal advisor under the Securities and Exchange Commission, we have, we want to look at all options of, for our client, and that's what we're required to do. If you're not registered with the unit, with the SCC, that's buyer beware.
Well, I'm sure we're going to do it right, so I don't, don't insinuate that we would do it with somebody who's not registered.
Right.
Or other municipalities that are doing it with somebody that's not registered. Because I would assume they would do it correctly.
That's what I would hope. But actually, you know, I attend SCC conferences, and, and they're saying, in every state, they've got violators, and they're going after them.
I'm just trying to figure out what's best for our town.
Sure.
Any other questions? We'll go ahead and close the work session.
Thank you.
I would like to pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Julie, roll call, please.
Robert Pope.
Present.
Bill Holland.
Greg Susan.
Present.
Don Loudon.
Present.
Jason Puckett.
Present.
Okay, we have a quorum. So next on the agenda is the consent agenda. Any questions?
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda, including the check register for August 28th, the work session Miranda from August 14th, and the minutes for August 14th as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Julie, roll call, please.
Don Loudon.
Four.
Jason Puckett.
Four.
Greg Susan.
Four.
Robert Pope.
Four.
Bill Holland.
Four.
Next is the first of two public comment sessions. The public may comment on items on the agenda that are not part of a public hearing or on a specific matter within the council's jurisdiction. If you'd like to speak, please come forward, make sure the microphone is on, and state your name and address. No one coming forward will close the public comment session and move on to council comment and liaison reports. Robert, we'll start on your end tonight.
I don't think I can share anything from the exit interview yet, but we've had the exit interview. The audit is, the audits, excuse me, are complete now. You'll have news soon. Oh, tomorrow?
Thank you.
Of course. Nothing new from you.
Greg?
We had a plan commission, but we did, there were no cases, so.
I have nothing.
Nothing? Okay, moving on, new business, introduction of the 2026 budget.
Thank you. Brian, are you going to put up a, I mean, so, we had a work session, I took you through the sustainability, which we kind of outlined, we started the process. You should have in front of you this document, not as large as mine, but I've got extra copies ready. So, this is our proposed levels for the different funds. And keep in mind that all of these funds do, we put them into Gateway, they're not required to be in Gateway, all of them. The DLG Act is not applying upon them, but it is then available for the public to look at. And so it's full disclosure, and that's what we've been doing many, many, many years. So, the general fund we're proposing is at a level of 10 million 200. Keep in mind that that is also, we've talked about going after an excess, excessive levy in order to help our public safety and all of our necessary services. So, if we do not receive that excess levy, and if, or if you chose not to go after it, and remember, I indicated that this is the final year for it, then we may have to cut the 10 million too. The MVH fund is 1.8 million, and the restricted fund is 490,000. We've separated it out so that you could see. Keep in mind, the restricted fund has been around, but it's been in the higher number, and now we chose to break it out. On Gateway, it will have to be added together, so, but, and that is 50%, up to 50% of our revenue is set aside there. Local roads and streets, or LRS, is set at 600. Municipal wheel tax, if you approve it, we have set the budget at 400. That will be used only for roads, can't be used for anything else. If you do not approve going forward, the municipal wheel tax, then this budget will just go away. Okay? So, it'll be automatic. The C, or the public safety lip, that is one where I told you that fund will be going away at the end of 2027, because the lip, public safety tax rate, will be going away. That is set at 225. We're keeping it stable because of the fact that it's going away. The next one is CCI. CCI is Human Capital Improvement Fund, provided by cigarette tax, and so, and vaping tax, and very, very minimal at 30,250. Next one is CCD, which is Human Capital Development Fund, and it's 1.5 million. We are up there a little bit because we are using some of those funds to help with the widening project of, Brian, help me out.
Dan Jones.
Dan Jones.
Dan Jones, this is.
Yeah. Next one is food and beverage. This is the one that we use for both our food and beverage funds, and that's set at 2.4 million, and helps with some of the parks and things like that. And, so, next one is Park Recreation Fund. That's the one that basically fees come from. It is not supported by property taxes at all. Riverboat is just that. It is, my understanding, it's the current casinos, and, and the revenue is not changing. We are keeping it at 100,000, and generally, it's in budget for improvements. The next one is Edit. Edit will go away in 2027, and it's been capped at 1.5 million. Again, not to really spend down the balance, but use it a little bit, and some of the widening is on, in that also. The next one is road bond debt. Those are the debt that we have for both road bond and the 2024 road bond. Again, those have been issued, and this is just the annual payments. HRH tip, and all the tips below that are the ones that we will have to have a formal spending plan out of the redevelopment commission approved by December 1. And so we put together preliminary items on that. The most notable is that the larger tip, which is AEDA, we will be removing some of the appropriations out of 25 and putting it into 26. Otherwise, we could not have 5 million and 6 million. So you'll have what we call a line two resolution that just moves that authority over one year. Okay? Next one is the wrong break-in tip. Those are all set for, for any bonds that are paid. CRP, that's the clerk records perpetuation fund. For a minute, I get that one mixed up with the county's one, too. But this is just perpetuation of records, and it basically comes in from court fees. So it's, it's a minimal tip. Recreation impact fee, again, impact fee, 500,000, that's going to help with improvements at parks. Tree mitigation, that's exactly what it's called. It's set at 40,000. We don't get a lot of money in there, but we try and spend it adequately or correctly. Rainy day fund, that's your emergency fund. That's when the, you know, tornadoes have hit southern Indiana, and they've had to put on a roof. If the roof would go off here tonight, you would have an appropriation to put a new roof on or get it covered tomorrow morning. So Brian would have access to that, because it's already appropriated for an emergency, and we're just rolling that over. We never anticipate spending it, but you never know. LEC, L-E-C-E, which is law enforcement continuing ed, that is $10,000, very minimal, if basically this for law enforcement to continue their education. Next one, which is stormwater. Stormwater is 1.325. We've lowered that a little bit, because we were doing a lot of the projects in the past, and so we're, you know, we're trying to keep the amount of expenditures equal to the revenue. And we, most of these funds, all of these funds would kind of verify where we are as of 630, and that we're on cores, not overspending and not underspending based upon what we've experienced in revenue so far. Infrastructure contribution lowered a little bit because the revenue's a little down on that one. And then the opioids are those, those are just set to be able to spend the amount, the small amount that we get. So, at this point in time, that is the proposed levels for 2026. You've got some of the detail and the sustainability, and Ryan will be giving you final Form 1s to kind of match up to this. And we're not asking for any approval tonight, obviously. We're setting the, the public hearing in September and the adoption in October, so you've got lots of time. But this is, we, normally, we like to kind of set the course about where we're going, and hear any feedback from council. So at this point in time, I'll pause if there's any questions.
Question I have regarding the stormwater. You indicate how you're trying to balance revenue and expense, but are, have you captured the new subdivisions that we're putting in out there, and those people coming on board?
Go ahead, little friend.
Yeah, we do. They lag a little bit behind, because they won't get it till actually, you know, we bill quarterly. So once they're actually assessed, and they're actually in the property tax records, because that's how we actually get the customers, is from the county's database, then they'll come online. So yes, we automatically capture those. We pull that data every three months before we bill. So as they're coming on, we are grabbing them, and that revenue has increased over the years. The stormwater utility has increased over the years.
Now, we haven't increased the rate ever.
We haven't, not since it was created, correct.
Keep that in mind.
So then, the other question is, that number is what's being billed, is it, what's, is it still 100%? Or what are we collecting? Because we're not collecting 100%.
Because we're using actual cash when we use.
Yeah, we're using actual cash when we do this. So this is all based on what we're billing in cash. But you're correct, the stormwater board has implemented a collections policy, which we'll start implementing. So, actually, I think in September, there's going to be a letter going out to property owners who are deficient, so there is a process to, to catch up to some of those people, and then we're going to start leaning properties as of the first of the year. So the stormwater board did, did pass that policy. So, again, that doesn't, this is cash side, that's not, that's more operational side, so that shouldn't necessarily impact the budget or anything like that.
Other questions?
I don't think so. You were very thorough in the work session. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. So, Brian, is there any other things you want me to cover?
No, sir. You've done a wonderful job. Thank you, Greg.
Thank you. I'm going to leave, I'm heading down to have Labor Day with my grandkids down in Knoxville.
Fun.
Thank you very much.
Safe travels. Bye.
Thank you, Greg. Good job.
Okay, introduction of the 2026 general fund budget.
So yeah, I'm going to do this piece, and then if you guys have some specific questions, the police chiefs are here as well to assist me with anything. So, again, just for anyone who may be joining us online, who's just catching up, I want to talk a little bit about kind of the budget process. And if you start with the work session, we went through the sustainability analysis. The sustainability analysis is what we use to make sure that whatever budgets we set, that we're able to continue operating going forward into the next three years. So that's kind of the foundation. Then what Greg just presented is, based on the sustainability analysis, what we believe the budget can be for each of those individual funds. So over the next two council meetings, then, we're going to talk about how we're going to, what our appropriations would be to meet those proposed budgets. So, I normally break those into two meetings, and so tonight, I'm going to talk about the general fund. At your September 11th meeting, we're going to talk about the non-general fund. And so, the general fund is the largest source in terms of how we fund things like public safety. The non-general fund stuff, typically, those funds all have specific uses in which we have to spend the money towards those certain uses. So, general fund, again, is mostly, there's several departments, the town council department, the clerk treasurer, the town manager, planning and building, police department, and public works. And this year, we've created a new department called facilities, which will be for the operating of the civic center. As you guys are all aware, we've done an agreement with the school corporation to share in the cost of the operation of those. So we've broken that out into a different budget, because we have to be able to track that, and then the school corporation will pay a portion of those. So, if you're, if anyone's following online, or council, if you want to follow, you can see the Form 1s. I'm not going to specifically walk you through the Form 1s, I think you guys are capable of looking at those. A couple of things I would point out to you, if you look through them, there's numbers in blue. Those numbers are the budget numbers that changed from last year. And then if you come all the way down to the bottom, there's a total, and you can see what the total budget was for the previous year, what the proposed budget is for this year, what the dollar amount change was, and what the percentage change was. So, again, you guys can go through those individually. I'm just going to highlight tonight, a summary of what changed from last year. So, bear with me a little bit, I'm going to try to go through this, and I know you, the council has this, this wasn't online, so if there's anyone following along, they won't necessarily see it. So the first thing on the town side, I did not do an analysis of the police department, Chief Stoops, I believe, did that, and he provides that to you guys every year. But I did do a compensation analysis for the town employees. The last time we had done one of those was in 2018, and, so I completed a compensation analysis. I am proposing this year that in lieu of recommend, in lieu of cost of living adjustments, that I'm going to recommend that you guys change our actual pay grades. And I know I've had individual conversations with all of you, I've shared that presentation with all of you as well. If we want to talk some more about that analysis, we could do that maybe at the next meeting or at our future work session. Again, I like this new system. It moves towards more of a performance-based pay scale, which we've not really had for our employees before. I did mention in my summary that this does put some pressure on the department heads to actually evaluate their employees and not just give them the max of what they can do. Again, I think this is good for department heads, it's also good for our employees to give them some incentive to perform, or if we have performance issues, give them incentive to actually correct them. Typically, when we just do a cost of living adjustment, it's not very much money, and so it's not much of a performance incentive to employees. So, I do think this, this program that I've prepared and presented to all of you is a good way. I have budgeted the maximum of those pay grades in the budget, and so what you guys see in your Form 1 is reflective of including that, and it is sustainable as well. That was also in the sustainability analysis that Greg went over with you guys as well. The next thing, obviously, just because we continue to have staff grow, growing and other things, we do have minor increases. The next thing, obviously, just because we continue to have staff grow, growing and other things, we do have minor increases in some lines like computer consulting, computer replacement, insurance, supplies, utilities, legal and financial consulting. One thing that is a pretty substantial increase in next year's general fund budget is liability insurance increase. I've had some preliminary discussions with our carrier Highland. Our workers comp has been, has been performing really well. We've also had really good luck, if you guys recall, on our cyber, we didn't have, we had a zero increase last year. But where we seem to be getting hit is on the property, property and casualty in our auto. As we continue to grow and we add police officers and we add town vehicles and town staff, we're getting more and more vehicles. That also subjects us to more and more liability. So we've seen some substantial increases in that just due to our growth. However, this year we've had a couple of substantial losses as well. And so our insurance carrier has recommended that we use a twenty percent placeholder. That's pretty substantial, but it is in your budget and in the form one. And at this point, okay.
What's twenty percent of what?
It's twenty percent of, I think our renewal last year was about five hundred thousand.
So it's twenty percent of your premium paid.
Correct, yes. So yeah, it's, it's about a hundred thousand dollar increase.
Are they going to shop other?
They are going to shop our property and casualty this year. We've already had that discussion. I think I shared that with you guys last year. Again, we've been very happy with Astra, who is our actual carrier for property and casualty. So, but we still feel obligated that we should still shop it and see if they still are the most competitive. We are not going to shop our workers comp. And if travelers comes back with a good renewal on the cyber, they've been fantastic. So those two, we, as long as we don't get surprised by renewals, we would probably like to stay with them. But on the property and casualty, yes, I think we will.
So if we increase our placeholder liability by twenty percent, is that kind of like escrowing twenty percent of the premiums?
Correct, yes.
So I hope then our carrier doesn't look at that and go, oh, there's a hundred thousand dollars of excess funds that we can raise their premiums sixty, eighty, a hundred thousand dollars.
They're not allowed to do that.
Yeah, they're not allowed.
They're regulated. They're not allowed to do that.
Loopholes.
Any other questions on that one? The next one is, is a little bit of a shock. I know we haven't seen this in a while, but I've, I've touted how great the AIM medical trust has been for our employees. And so we actually found out that our renewal on medical insurance or on, on our health insurance this year is actually going to be zero percent. So that's fantastic for our employees and it's fantastic for the town. I haven't shared this with you guys yet either because we just found out, I shared it with the employees this week. But we found out also that AIM is going to give a premium holiday in November. So the town will get zero, will be required to pay zero premium in November. We are required to pass on our savings that the employees would normally pay. So the employees will also not pay their premiums for November. So again, that's fantastic. And that's because the fund, it is a self-insured fund within itself, but it's performed so well this year that, that they're able to do that and still keep going. So again, pat on the back for what a great job AIM and the medical trust has been for us. I think that's.
What is that number that we're sharing?
I don't know what the exact number is. There's a meeting on September eighteenth or something like that where we're going to get more details. They just shared the premium holiday with us. We can calculate it though. We, we've got it from payroll and we'll, we'll share with you guys what that actual number is. We did, and I know this has kind of been an ongoing thing, to try to hire additional police officers. Due to, again, this is subject to the surprise of what Greg talked about earlier, that our ability to do the, our growth appeal, due to growth and the annexation appeal. We actually have enough funds in the budget to increase. We've been trying to hire two officers every year. But if the council is willing to, to do those two appeals, we actually believe we have enough money in this budget to actually hire three police officers next year. So what's in the budget that's presented to you is, is actually showing three new police officer positions. There are a couple of other police, they've proposed to increase officer salary from seventy seven five to eighty thousand, which is about a three to three point three percent increase for police. We did get a little present from the state pension in the perf. That number is going up, increased to twenty three point three percent, the employer contribution. Last year it was twenty point three percent. So we're also absorbing three percent of that for sworn police officers. I know the police department has talked to you guys pretty substantially about this in the hiring process, that some of these things are really important to them, to attract good candidates. And so they're also asking to increase the clothing allowance for officers from a thousand to twelve hundred. They are also recommending an increase to longevity from a hundred and fifty dollars a year to two hundred dollars a year. You guys will remember last year, we did an analysis and we were way behind other communities in longevity. I think the average was closer to three hundred and that's what we bumped from a hundred to one fifty last year. And so this year we're proposing to go to one fifty to two hundred. You guys will see the comp plan next month. So there'll be a couple of recommendations out of the comp plan. We'll want to make some changes to the U D O. And then we'll, we'll also potentially want to pursue doing some overlay districts for some of the areas identified in the comp plan. And so we've put some long range planning funds in the planning and building budget. We've also had, started initiative and really it's super important as we're trying to move into the new civic center, an initiative to go paperless. And so you, you guys are aware, we did a lot of digitizing this year. We still have a lot more to do. Our goal is to try to digitize all of it if we can, so that when we move to the new building, we don't take a bunch of paper with us and we're not moving stuff over to the new building. So there's also funding in there for that. Most of that funding really goes to the planning and building department. They're the ones who generate the most paper. Julie does as well, but Julie's got to keep hers by law, so she can't necessarily get rid of hers yet. Last year we also hired a lobbyist and so we've continued to budget for a lobbyist to proactively advocate on behalf of the town for better legislation. This is, next year will be our last year of the youth assistance program. And so there's money in the budget for that. And then last year, if you guys recall, we only budgeted fifty percent of the expected operating costs for the civic center. And that was meant to be a placeholder next year. Again, we're probably not going to expend it next year because we're not expecting to get into the building until November or December. But we're budgeting a hundred percent of our operating costs for the civic center. And so again, we should be in good shape then going into the following year. We know that we've got funds set aside for that. The last thing I wanted to mention was an actual deduction from the general fund. And I know I, a couple of you had, last year had a little bit of heartburn that we had some parks staff in the general fund. We actually pulled those two positions for the parks department out of the general fund. And so when you guys see the non-general fund at the September eleventh meeting, those employees have been pushed into the food and beverage. So there's no longer any parks employees being funded out of the general fund. So that's the summary of budget changes. I'm happy to answer any questions you guys have. Or if you guys have any feedback, please give it to me now. I would ask for you guys to provide feedback and all of this will generate to a point where we'll bring it to you guys for final approval in October.
Question I have for the police department, Chief Stoops. There's a spreadsheet that was passed out where you went around and you looked at your base salaries compared to a number of different police departments and perf longevity. With these recommended changes in the budget. I mean, we were, we weren't the worst and we weren't the best. I mean, we're certainly above average, I think. This should keep us at above average and assist you in hiring three police officers.
Well, if you look at the, the yellow line on that spreadsheet, that's the twenty twenty, that's what I've been calling the Avon twenty twenty five deficit. And if you look at the base salary, we were just below average. And our long, longevity earnings, we were quite a bit below average. And then on, when you, when you calculate the total perf salary, which is what Julie certifies every year, that our retirement's based off of, off of, we were still below average. All of the numbers above there, those are all twenty twenty five figure. If you look at that blue line and if this budget's passed the way it's presented, that will be the result of, of the increase from what, for what we're asking in the twenty twenty six budget. Now, I don't know exactly what those other entities and departments are going to do. Some of them may do zero. I know there's been some talk on the AIM chat room. I heard that some places are providing zero, some are doing two percent, three percent. So it's really, really difficult to see where we're going to land in twenty twenty six until everybody turns in their certified salaries for the year. And then, then we'll know for sure if we, if we're making up any ground. But if you recall, last year we were substantially below. And the last couple of years, we've done some, some substantial increases that have helped us kind of jump back into the game and kind of get back in there and be competitive. I think that's where we'll be again next year. I think we're going to be average or maybe even just a little bit above, just depends on what these other agencies do.
If you took out the high, highest one being Carmel and the lowest one being looks like Mooresville, that deficit probably isn't going to be there.
Yeah, that's, but those are all still agencies that we are competing with. And they're also in the same area that, that we work in the metro area. So I understand what you're saying, but I don't think it would be fair to take those out because the reality is we can't take them out. They're there.
Have we lost officers to Carmel?
Yes.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Thank you.
I have a couple of questions.
For Sean?
No.
Okay.
Good, good job. Go away. So what, what's the schedule? When will we finally vote on the budget? Which meeting?
You will vote on the budget at the October, the first meeting in October. I don't, I apologize, I don't remember the date. You will hold your public hearing on September eleventh. October ninth is the meeting. So October ninth, we will vote on the budget. So any changes you guys would like, I'd like for you to have those to me prior to that meeting.
This is just one person on the council. Is this personal services up here, salary and wages, does that include a raise for the council?
It does. I've included a three percent raise for the town council.
My, my preference is since everything's going on with the budget in the state, that elected officials not get a raise this year. But I'm just one person on the council, so.
I'll agree with Bill on that. I don't, I don't see any reason for the elected officials to get a raise this year, given the turmoil of SB one and everything that's going on at the state house. I'd rather be conservative and push that off. Again, just my opinion.
And you're speaking just the five of you, right? The council, as this elected official, this is my full-time job.
My comment was elected officials, but that, that's open for.
The five of you.
But you're elected as well, but that's open for discussion. It was just, it was just my.
Just remember, this is my full-time job, that I do more than full-time. Remember that. Do not screw me over.
I would say we need to clarify what we're trying to do. If you're talking five town council members, I don't care. But if you're going to capture in general the elected officials, I do care.
And, and as a council member, you, that's fine. I don't have a problem.
And the other, just a reminder too, like last year we went down to the, to the wire to get the budget approved. Because there's confusion and new people on board. Just if you have issues, get with Ryan, get with Julie and get your questions answered. So we don't run into the same situation we had last year.
Yeah, and I think, and I think this year Ryan did a much better job in preparing us, at least those new people. So that's actually the only thing I have on the budget. But again, I'm just one board member, so.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm happy to do whatever you guys want on that. I would like consensus from you guys on what it is you want to do or what direction you want me to go in. Whether you want to provide that to me tonight or you want to provide it at the next meeting, either or. The one caution I would, I would give you guys about doing this, and part of the reason I always put these in, there's really two places where you can determine your salaries. One is the budget and one's when you actually do the salary ordinance. And so my caution to you always in not giving yourselves raises, and I appreciate you guys not wanting to do that. But I'll take you back to about five years ago when we hadn't done it for ten years. And we got to a point where, when we did actually make an adjustment to make you guys similar to what other council elected officials, it costs us ten thousand dollars per council member. So the town's budget took a fifty thousand dollar hit when that happened. So this is why I always budget the raises in the budget, because we don't want the budget to necessarily get behind. So I would just share that. That's my perspective of it. That's a purely administrative position, so I respect your guys' thoughts on that. And as long as you give me direction, the other option is you could approve it in the budget, but not approve it for yourselves in the salary ordinance. So I just share that with information with you as well.
Any other questions or comments or? Okay, we'll consider the introduction of the 2026 general fund budget complete. Moving on to the Make My Move renewal.
Yeah, I'll do this. Ryan Pike is here as well. We discussed this with you guys at the work session, so we didn't necessarily plan a big presentation for you guys here tonight. This would be the next step is to do an agreement with Make My Move to do the renewal. The cost to the town originally, as you guys are aware, you, you have the information. This is a program that if the town moves forward with the I E D C, we'll do a fifty percent match. The total cost of the program, I apologize, I don't have it right in front of me, but. The cost of the town is eighty one thousand two fifty. What was, Ryan, what was the total cost, everything with, before we submit to the I E D C?
Two hundred and fifty two thousand five hundred.
Right, and so really our, there's three components of this. The first one is to pay Make My Move to assist us in advertising, running the program, the software, the support that they provide us to attract the platform that we use to attract movers. And then the town actually pays the actual cost, the incentives to movers. And then there is an administrative cost as well, which that's the, the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar number that Ryan shared. The I E D C picks up fifty percent of that total piece. And then the town picks up the difference of that, which is why it ends up being about eighty one thousand dollars. So last year, again, the concept of this program is to attract people to move here. I did share an article with you guys from the Wall Street Journal. And I had a town council member who shared with me another community that's doing the same thing. This is actually growing in popularity. It's spreading. We were the first community in Hendricks County to do it. Plainfield has followed and is doing it now as well. Noblesville has really been the poster child for it and, and their numbers are great. They've been doing it for a while. Again, we don't have the first experience. Last year was our first year. I would say that we were a little disappointed. We attracted five jobs last year and our goal had been ten. So part of this proposal is for Make My Move to not only help us get ten new jobs in the next year, but to also get those other five jobs. So really, we're going to try to get fifteen jobs in the next twelve months. And so I think we, we laid out for you guys at the work session, a plan that we had, kind of lessons learned as we went through our first year. We think we can do better this year and that we can actually get our movers. And again, I think we have some good incentives that would lead to attract the kind of people the town council would like to be here. And again, I think this program, I believe, is part of our economic development efforts. It's kind of part of our portfolio. We, we want to try to hit different areas. You know, we, we'd like some industrial warehouses. We had Rise, we have Make My Move, where we're, we have a whole portfolio of different things that we're doing to attract economic development to our community. And so again, I think this is a unique one. I know it's a little diff, different. I know there are some people who have some heartburn about paying for people to move here. And there's people that live here who, you know, didn't get paid to move here. But again, we know that there's this outflow of people who have remote jobs, who. who want to move to communities like ours. And so again, I would I would ask for your guys' approval of this. I don't ask for that lightly. I know that that the council may have some disappointment and that we only got five jobs, but I would ask for you guys to give us another 12 months. Let us see what we can do. If we don't see better success over the next 12 months, then certainly we can have some discussions next year about the program. And we did budget the $80,000, which is our match in edit funds. And so we are able to pay our share of the project. I'm happy to answer any questions, and Ryan Pike is as well.
I think the other thing we need to look at this is to enhance our ability to get more people to move here. We have to increase our incentives or look at that package because we've we found out through your analysis that other communities have, I guess, richened the pot a little bit. And I think we need to not only use what Avon has to offer, but really what Hendricks County has to offer, such as the Live, Hendricks County Live, and and things of that nature.
So when I look at the contract, I know, you know, we've said 81,250 is the total cost to the town, but the contract says that the town of Avon shall pay 120,000. So where's that difference coming from?
So remember, we're being reimbursed for half of that from the IDC. So we pay it all upfront and then the IDC pays us back. So that's why our contract with them is 120, but then we're going to get reimbursed from the IDC.
60,000.
Correct.
And then we end up at 81,250 because it's in addition to that 60,000 that we're not being reimbursed. These are the additional cost for the move? Or where's where's the difference between the 60 and 81?
The incentives as well. And then the administrative costs are actually for us to administer the program. So that's my time and effort, Suzanne's time and effort, or whoever helps assist with Make My Move. That's actually to us. And so that's why it doesn't end up a flat split because a portion of that is the IDC is paying half of that administrative cost, which is really our town staff time to administer the program. And that's why it ends up looking weird.
So we actually include that, the local, I showed the local in there, but the local program admin line item is included because that's another piece that the IDC matches. It's not something that the town is technically paying out. So then when you when you look at the 252,500 divided by 2, it's 126,250, you get to 81,250 because you subtract the 45,000 from the 126,250.
Got it. The other towns that are currently local local to Indianapolis, let's say, we don't require our job seeker to take a job with a local company within our area. What's the percentage of the other communities that are requiring that?
Great question. We just started piloting a lot of that. So it just depends on the community. It's something that we can do. We can go find, you know, people that obviously want to come and find a job here. Realistically, even as part of the program, that's that's something Ryan and I talked about. So if there's interest in including that, we could actually absolutely do that and it'd probably be a separate page, maybe even a separate incentive package altogether because they're not remote, they're not bringing a job with them, if that makes sense. But if there's interest, we could do that. I think off the top of my head, we probably have five that are piloting piloting the workforce job seeker part of it right now.
Well, I just think about, for instance, Harlan Bakery. You know, they've never been able to hire the number of employees that they that they need. And so here we are bringing people with their jobs, but we have local businesses that are seeking people and have a deficit of workers. So to me, if we're paying people to come here, then I would think that we would want to help our local employers fill some of those positions.
Yeah, that could absolutely be part of this package at no additional cost.
Any other comments, discussion, questions, anything? If not, I guess we're ready to for someone to make a motion.
I make a motion that we approve the Make My Move contract in the amount of $120,000 as presented with enhanced incentives.
Greg, the proposal that we provided you does include the enhanced incentives. So the incentive number that you're seeing includes, yeah, the 87.5 includes enhanced incentives.
There is no second. So I guess that motion is dead. Would someone else like to make a motion? There is no motion.
Okay, let's move on to the next item.
I appreciate it, John.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan.
Next on the agenda is award the quote for the ADA sidewalk grinding. Are you speaking to that or Steve?
Yeah, I'll speak to it. Steve's here if he has any questions. This is a continued part of our ADA program is to make sidewalks accessible that may be trip hazards. And so this is a program we've done every year for about the last four years, five years maybe. And we've found has been a very cost-effective program. Again, what they do is actually take a saw and grind sideways and remove any of those trip hazards. The benefit of doing that is we can actually bring a lot of sidewalks into ADA compliance at a very low cost. And so we would recommend you guys approve this quote. This is the contractor who has done it for us the last couple of years. They've their work has been great and we've had no issues. You can see you have a recommendation from the public works staff to approve for not to exceed $15,000, and the contractor is PCC. Happy to answer any questions.
Just find it interesting, a company from Holland, Michigan can come here and have a budget of $15,000 to do three subdivisions, make it worthwhile.
Steve Moore, Public Works Director, yeah, Greg, to answer that question. Yeah, they come, they do a number of communities at the same time, and we're getting in on that with the other communities. This is our mass attempt to come into ADA compliance. We'd like to, anyone listening, let them know that if you do have an individual issue with sidewalk in your community that's not on this list, we do one-off replacements where we actually take the sidewalk completely out and not just grind them, we actually replace sidewalks too. So if there are any issues, please let us know. We'll we'll take care of them. But this is a mass project where if you have a quarter inch vertical distance or more, that's not ADA compliant. A lot of people don't care. They don't notice, but but people do care that, you know, as you know, if you have a special need or it's a tripping hazard, kids running around. So we're trying to get each neighborhood as we as we go. And this is just the only company that's doing it this method. It's way less expensive to do the grinding it is to replace full panels of sidewalk. So that's that's the benefit of this program.
Any questions or discussion? And if not, someone, we're open for a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the quote for the ADA sidewalk grinding and award the bid to PCC in an amount not to exceed $15,000 as presented.
Second.
Thank you, Julie. Roll call, please.
Bill Holland?
Four.
Jason Buckett?
Four.
Don Loudon?
Four.
Greg Zuzen?
Four.
Robert Pope?
Four.
Next is Resolution 2025-24, declaring an economic revitalization area, the Lakeside Book Company.
Yes, I think John reported to you guys on this. This is the first step in the process for establishing a tax abatement for the Lakeside Book Company. The Lakeside Book Company is proposing to locate into the Avon Logistics Development in Building 1, which is the first building on 100 South. It's a million-square-foot building. They are going to occupy 700,000 square feet. Their information is attached. I've given it. You're not really voting on the tax abatement at this point. You're only, the first step in the process is creating an economic revitalization area, which just makes it eligible for a tax abatement. So if you guys approve this resolution tonight, then we will actually advertise a public hearing and then you guys will actually consider the actual tax abatement, which would occur at your second meeting in September on that. I'm happy to answer any questions. Again, you're not really voting on the abatement at this point. You're just voting on whether it is worthy of being eligible. Again, we did provide you all the information on the abatement request. This is a personal property tax abatement. You guys already gave a real property tax abatement to Chicago Industrial, who's the owner of the building. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
When we do vote on the abatement, will we have clawback language in there?
If you want clawback language, you should let Mr. Taylor know so he can coordinate that with Lakeside when they make their request. Typically, typically, I would say for a project like this where the real estate is built and that abatement has been provided and you do a personal property, such clawbacks are rare. Doesn't mean you can't do them, but they're rarer. But you're free to have that requirement, but that needs to be worked out, in my opinion. That needs to be worked out with the applicant well ahead of the time you would. Can't you can't do that negotiation at a hearing very well.
And just to clarify, even without clawback language, if they weren't in compliance, we could void the abatement. I mean, we could stop paying it out going forward.
Yeah, I might say it a little differently. Every year, you're required to certify their insubstantial completion. If they were, if they didn't put in the personal property that they indicated they would and and they didn't create the jobs that they indicate they have, and you could see on their attachment, they have their CF1 and their supporting documents are already there for you. But yeah, if they aren't in substantial compliance with those final CF1, then they don't get any abatement. They don't get the personal, they get zero, you know, zero abatement, 100% tax bill. So you would be reviewing it every year anyway. I think, again, real estate concerns us a little more. Or if they ask for cash upfront as part of an economic development package, we become very concerned. This is, to me, it looks a little easier. But again, if you have that sentiment, then get with Mr. Taylor and tell him what you think so that that can be negotiated.
That's what I was going to add is if we gave them cash upfront, then we would want clawback to get that money back if they didn't perform.
Just don't give cash upfront.
Right.
Yeah. Did have that.
Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2025-24, declaring an economic revitalization area for Lakeside Book Company as presented.
Second.
Julie, roll call, please.
Don Loudon?
Four.
Bill Holland?
Four.
Robert Pope?
Four.
Greg Zuzen?
Four.
Jason Buckett?
Four.
Okay, final reading of ordinance 2025-25, implementing a municipal wheel tax and surtax.
This ordinance establishes your local wheel tax and surtax. You recall, your wheel tax is proposed to be $40 on certain motor vehicles and $25 would be the surtax. This falls in line with what you heard Greg Garretos say about the future of road funding a little bit. But the ordinance itself imposes and establishes these two taxes and also establishes new funds that would house revenue from both. This money is paid to the beer motor vehicles and then collected, and then we get our share later. This is second reading, and I would remind you that if you want to impose this tax, you must do so today so it can be turned in tomorrow.
Any discussion or questions?
My question is, you're requesting the maximum amount of $25 and $40?
Yes, that's what Greg Garretos and staff were recommending that you do. You guys can't amend that amount. There is a minimum and there's a maximum. We did recommend that you guys do the maximum, and that's what's presented in your ordinance.
But we also have estimated highs and estimated lows because we can't control who's in Avon by the zip code and who's in the township.
Well, the the state of Indiana said they're going to work that out. They know the real reason, I mean, Greg's looking at it from a dollar sense. My recommendation would agree with him for different reasons is that the state of Indiana, particularly through Indot, has given indications that they may qualify your eligibility for CCMG money in future years based upon the percentage of your wheel tax to the max. So otherwise, if you apply for a million dollars of CCMG money and you your wheel and surtax rates are at 50% of the max, then the state will say, it's great, we'll give you 50% of what you asked for, even though we love your project. So that word got out about six months ago. And so I think many counties that weren't at the max have gone to the max. Many municipalities, which are doing their first wheel tax, they're going to the max because they don't want to deal with limitations on that. Then in the new legislation this year, as I discussed with you a couple of months ago, the bridge matching and other road matching programs, again, the fear is that if you don't go to the max, you're not going to get all your money for your roads. And you're going to have to put that on property taxes, which is going to take money away from your other services like police, parks, and other employees. So I would just tell you that the my recommendation would be, given what the state has said and what the what looks like its life is going to be like on the horizon, is that you you may lose funding that would otherwise be available to you. State money coming here, not your money, state money. So that's why I I agree with Greg Garretos, but for different reasons.
Well, that's the first time I've heard of that because, you know, the the wheel tax, I'm fine at $40 because that's commercial vehicles, buses, recreational vehicles, et cetera. But the vehicle excise tax is you, me, my neighbors, and everybody else. And we're being pressured into doing this by the state, by our legislature. And so my recommendation was not to do 25, but was to do 15 to soften the burden. Now you're telling me that if we don't go to the max, we, in essence, I won't use the word I was going to use, but.
Well, and I'll agree with you too that that what you tell your neighbors is the same thing I tell my neighbors, I've told my neighbors already, which is, look, don't blame us. You your income, state income tax went from 3.4 down, and then the state pushed all this obligation to pave our roads. They cut our road paving money, and they said, well, we're giving you the tools that you need. So as local taxes go up and people don't like it, the reason that's happening is the state is pushing that on you guys. It's really not your fault at all. The amount of tax that I pay or you pay in 2022 to now is it's the same. It just goes to different people. And so the people who make the rules sometimes push it back to the people who don't make the rules, and that's what's happening here. The probably the amount of tax, I mean, I save money on my income taxes now, my state income taxes. I save it and I pay more in local. I save it, and I pay more in local income taxes. No one should kid themselves that providing local government services costs any less. It doesn't. Just a change of who you're paying it to.
In our budget, we only showed four-hundred thousand dollars. In this maximum illustration, it's four-seventy-seven. Do you have to do it by dollar amount, or can you do it by a whole number of four-hundred, not to exceed, four-hundred thousand?
No, you have to do it by a number, because that's actually how it's associated. So, that's the risk, is you don't, we set the budget at four-hundred thousand, because we don't actually know what revenue we're actually going to get. And again, just like we do with all of our other funds, we want to build a fund balance in those programs. The risk is, if you approve something less, we can't budget four-hundred thousand dollars. We're going to have to budget something less. And so, that would be the risk. And even at four-hundred thousand, we're still going to have to be careful to start spending that money before we actually see what we're going to get. So, again, anytime this happens, when we have to start something, we have to be very cautious when we begin. But unfortunately, no, it's, we have to, actually, there's like sixteen categories, and we have to put an actual dollar amount and submit it to the BMV in a specific form, that then they will use to translate to, when people go to the, get their license plates renewed, that it'll come across.
I know we depend heavily on the CCMG, the Community Crossing Grants, to help pave our roads and, you know, maintain our roads and things like that. So, if we have to do that to qualify for those funds, then, again, we're just being put in a bad position, where it's pushing it on, you know, the local people to make that decision. But at the same time, we can't afford to lose that other funding that comes from the CCMG. It would probably end up costing a lot more than what the hit would be on renewing my license plate, your license plate, and everyone's license plate individually. Someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve Ordinance twenty-two-five dash twenty-five, implementing a municipal wheel tax and surtax, as presented.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Julie, roll call, please.
Tom Loudon?
Four.
Bill Holland?
Four.
Jason Puckett?
Four.
Robert Pope?
Against.
Greg Zuzen?
Against.
Moving on, final reading of ordinance twenty-two-five dash twenty-six, amending the employee handbook for the SEA four-oh-nine.
Yes, this ordinance amends a portion of your employee handbook to bring you into compliance with Senate Enrolled Act four-oh-nine. Senate Act four-oh-nine requires employers in Indiana to count as excused absences of their employees who miss work because of the need to attend either school case conferences or school attendance conferences for their child. So, this would amend Section six-point-one, three-point-one, making such an absence officially There are some conditions, as I noted last time on this, that the absence period is unpaid, and it must be no longer than necessary to attend the meeting that you're talking about. And it does limit the definition of child, there is a notice requirement. So, this doesn't mean, this is not a paid leave benefit, this is unpaid, but it does, just says you can't discipline an employee who is required to go to a school attendance or case conference. And these meetings are thought to be important by the legislature, one, to attack, to address either behavioral problems in terms of a case conference or special education needs, and then the school attendance, which is the big issue now, the last couple of years for schools, trying to keep attendance levels higher. So, we don't, trying to get ahead of the truancy issue a little bit. So, this would simply bring your employee handbook up to speed with what is already the law in Senate Enrolled Act four-oh-nine.
If not, we'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve Ordinance twenty-two-five dash twenty-six, amending the employee handbook for SEA four-oh-nine, as presented.
Second.
Julie, roll call, please.
Robert Pope?
Four.
Greg Zuzen?
Four.
Bill Holland?
Four.
Don Loudon?
Four.
Jason Puckett?
Four.
Thank you. Dan, legal counsel report?
Nothing to add, Mitch.
Okay, the second of two public comment sessions is open. No one coming forward, we'll close the second and move on to counsel comment.
Julie, tell us about our gateway audit.
I can't talk about it publicly, technically, till tomorrow, but let's just say, I think you will be extremely pleased.
Ryan, counsel calendar.
Yeah, as we talked about in the budget, we do have lots more budget on September eleventh, it's going to be heavy budget. So, we'll do our, our public hearing will be advertised. Julie, don't forget to press the button on the advertisement tomorrow. We'll also have a work session, so we'll have work session at five-thirty, regular council meeting at seven PM on September eleventh. That's all I've got.
Thank you. Meeting is adjourned.